The common council meeting of Tuesday, May 7th, 2013 at 7:06 PM. And ask for confirmation of appropriate meeting notice.
The agendas were posted at Davis Hardware in Milton, Pigg, Glwyndli and the Shaw Municipal Center.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome everyone and address any questions or concerns that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to item three, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, new business. This is the, uh...
Proclamation.
The one reason I thought about not running for mayor.
I, there was more. I could have remembered you today.
All right, here we go. My apologies.
Take the time on that first one.
Nice and slow.
We'll make it last the whole week.
We could move that one down and first, you know.
All right, National Police Week, May 13th through 17th, 2013. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Milton play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of Milton. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the city of Milton unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Mayor Brett J. Frazier of the city of Milton, call upon the citizens of the city of Milton and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 13th through 18th, 2013 as Police Week. With appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. And in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the city of Milton to observe the 15th, the 15th day of May 2013 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Next, Emergency Medical Services Week, May 19th through the 25th, 2013. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators and others. And whereas, the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Mayor Brett J. Frazier, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 2013 as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme EMS, One Mission, One Team, I encourage the community to observe this week by attending an open house at the Milton Fire Station on Sunday, May 19th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM and view the demonstration of the Lucas Chest Compression System. Equally important, I'm sure, is the International Migratory Bird Day. That will be May 11th, 2013. Whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed in wildlife that share our communities. And whereas many citizens recognize and welcome migratory songbirds as symbolic harbingers of spring. And whereas these migrant species also play an important economic role in our community, controlling insect pests and generating millions in recreational dollars statewide. And whereas migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas, facing a growing number of threats on their migration routes and in both their summer and winter homes. And whereas, public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservation. And whereas citizens enthusiastic about birds, informed about the threats they face and empowered to help address those threats can directly contribute to maintaining healthy bird populations. And whereas, since 1993, International Migratory Bird Day has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean and the southern U.S. And whereas hundreds of thousands of people will observe IMBD gathering in town squares, community centers, schools, parks, nature centers and wildlife refuges to learn about birds, take action to conserve them and simply to have fun. And whereas, while IMBD officially is held each year on the second Saturday in May, its observance is not limited to a single day and planners are encouraged to schedule activities on the dates best suited to the presence of both migrants and celebrants. And whereas IMBD is not only a day to foster appreciation for wild birds and to celebrate and support migratory bird conservation, but also a call to action. Now therefore, I, Brett J. Frazier, Mayor of the city of Milton, do hereby proclaim May 11th, 2013 as International Migratory Bird Day in the city of Milton. And I urge all citizens to celebrate International Migratory Bird Day and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large. No, no applause. Finally, National Historic Preservation Month is May 2013. Whereas See, Save, Celebrate is the theme for National Historic Preservation Month 2013, co-sponsored by the Milton Historic Preservation Commission and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And whereas historic preservation is inherently economically, environmentally and socially sustainable, fostering a culture of reuse and maximizing the life cycle of all resources through conservation. And whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, sustaining development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped the city of Milton and us as a people. And whereas historic preservation encourages community reinvestment, saving resources and promoting socially, culturally and economically rich communities. Now therefore, I, Brett J. Frazier, do recognize May 2013 as National Historic Preservation Month and proclaim May 2013 as Milton Historic Preservation Month. And call upon the people of Milton to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance.
Thank you.
We will move on to item four E. Mayoral appointment of Karen Reed to Parks and Recreation Commission.
I recruited Karen to be on the Parks and Rec Commission. Her husband used to be a coach for me in the youth programs. She has grandkids in Milton. She has a daycare where she meets a lot of people who talk about the parks and so she has a, she has good insight into the things that we need. So I make a motion that we approve her for our Parks and Rec Committee.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On your amended agenda, item four F, mayoral appointment of Andrea Christensen to Parks and Recreation Commission.
I also recruited Andrea. She's a teacher at Milton High School and she has a son that's in junior high. So she kind of gets that younger people in, in the rec programs, what's going on with those. So I thought she'd be a good addition to, to the commission as well.
And both of these people promised to come to every meeting?
That's one of the things, Karen came to the meeting last night that we had without being appointed just to be an observer and so, and Andrea was going to come too, but she was called away to her parents. So she had to do some things there. So they should be there. So I make a motion that we accept her as well.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Also on the amended agenda, four G, mayoral appointment of Nancy Roder to Plan Commission. We had an opening on Plan Commission when Alderperson Roosh agreed to take a spot in the city council. It is a citizen appointment, so Alderperson Striegel will continue to be the council rep. This will be a regular citizen appointment. It isn't tied to any position on the council.
Did you recruit her?
Don recruited her too.
The only person who knows that Don didn't recruit her. Well, I was trying to give him credit. He sits next to me. He recruits when he gets a chance. I'll make a motion to appoint Nancy to the, um...
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Yep.
We didn't? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion and a second or any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto four H, application for temporary Class B beer license for the Milton Softball Association Memorial Day Weekend Softball Tournament.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two representatives from the softball association with us today. This application was turned in by a gentleman who would like to run the event in partnership with the association. The application was turned in 29 days. We like it the 30 days. It was turned in within the time period of the event, so that kind of just hit that threshold. As of yet, I have not seen any temporary operators applied for. That is one thing that is very important, is that they must have several licensed bartenders, which is what temporary operators are. I called the Mr. Hilt, who is the manager, and I tried to contact him regarding a few things I have in her back from him. I talked with Mr. Davis yesterday. If you're welcome, come to the podium and address the council if you'd like, answer any questions they may have. We had spoke yesterday. You may have somebody else that is going to participate in running the event.
Yeah, I recruited John Doomer and Jason France, who has run the, run the tournament the last probably 10 years to kind of oversee everything because Mr. Hilt's younger and he's not familiar with what it takes to put such an event on with the amount of teams they have and just following the rules and regulations and things of the park and the city and things like that. So John, John has agreed to come on board and kind of oversee things and I'm a lot more comfortable having him involved rather than just turning it over to, to Mr. Hilt. So I think it's a good thing that he's involved. Like I said, he was a member of the Knights of Columbus and they've been running it for hope, I mean, I've been playing in the tournament probably since I was 18, so 20 some years. So it's been around for a while and it's just, be ashamed to see it kind of go fizzle out. So, and as a softball association, I get a lot of calls and people concerned about the tournament and you know, it's a, it's a bigger event and our social thing, you know, with upwards of 30 some teams running it. And it's good to bring, you know, the people into the community and you know, to the local businesses and things like that too, so.
If anyone's been around Schulberg Park Memorial Day Weekend, it is a really huge, huge event, so.
Yeah, yeah. I ran it one year by myself or with my youth programs or coached, coaches, teams that I coached and it was a, it's kind of overwhelming. So you need a big crew of people to run it. So I'm kind of happy that John stepped forward and, and agreed to kind of help out with it, so. I don't know if there's any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Have we had any problems, have we, with beer license or anything?
No, we haven't. It's, it's been run very smooth. I just had a concern because the manager was someone I was not familiar with running it before and I just wanted to be sure Mr. Davis understood this being issued to the Mountain Softball Association, their name is attached to it if, if something comes back, if they have any incidents at the park, so.
We've been associated with it and with John for the last, you know, 10 years, I think it was, so. And within the new, Mr. Hilt being new and a little younger and not, you know, up to speed on everything, I, it was kind of concern, concern that Michelle and I talked about, so.
You'll be pleased for how that young kids are?
Yep. They do have to have fenced in area where the alcohol is to be served. They are to have some wristbands or hand stamp. We encourage wristbands for those that are of age. They actually be monitoring, checking IDs. And Mr. Doomer, that has, a volunteer to help, has ran it several years and he knows the rules and what's required, so.
I make a motion that we issue the temporary beer license.
Motion and a second to issue the temporary Class B beer license. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. If you could have John and Jason, some of the temporary operators.
Yeah, I'll get in touch with them and we'll be in your office tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Item I, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 374 regarding off-premise advertising signs.
Thank you, Mayor. This agenda had, item has been on the Plan Commission for the last two months, was reviewed by the Plan Commission for a month with the assistance of the attorney and the Chamber of Commerce's ad hoc sign committee. Came up with some recommendations to help potentially combat the negative impacts of the Highway 26 bypass project by changing our sign code. The mayor had actually asked that the Plan Commission move up their meeting a week so that it would coincide directly with the council meeting so that businesses who are in the process of already purchasing signs or preparing for this, the impact of the completion of the bypass would be able to do so during summer months, recognizing that the lag time for ordering some of those signs is anywhere from eight to 12 weeks. The proposed changes to the sign code were recommended by the Plan Commission to the city council tonight for approval and they really do two things. One of them is to authorize off-premise advertising, which currently right now is prohibited by the code in all non-residential districts with the process of a sign permit. That would include a sign maintenance plan and it would also include specificity that includes authorization from the property owner. That signed maintenance plan is presented to Howie and then subsequently goes to the Plan Commission for final approval. So there is still some oversight in that process, but it is designed to be more business-friendly. It is designed to promote opportunities for our businesses to successfully advertise and promote themselves in the wake of the Highway 26 bypass project. And based on the input of the Chamber's ad hoc sign committee as well as the Plan Commission, I would recommend that the city council approve the recommended changes in the amended sign code ordinance.
Questions, comments, thoughts?
Were any concerns presented to the Plan Commission over the ordinance?
Only one, and that is section nine, the section 78, 1933, section one. Commission member Ostrowski felt that subsection two, the permitted sign type monument, freestanding or pylon was somewhat redundant. After briefly conferring here with Attorney Schrader, he suggested leaving the wording as is, simply because making adjustments to it would mean we'd have to start the entire republication process over again. So we would encourage you not to do that because it's not a substantive change.
First reading, then later, second, third reading, the ordinance 374. A second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General items. The next meeting date, Jerry, can you talk through some of the challenges with staffing in the next meeting?
I can. City Clerk Ebert is going to be absent from the May 21st scheduled meeting, which certainly doesn't mean that we can't have the meeting. We can have another staff person take the meeting minutes. And I believe that the mayor also had a conflict with the May 21st meeting, a potential conflict with that date. So anytime there's more than one moving piece to a meeting date, we look at alternatives and obviously want to have a conversation with all of you because we need all of you to have a quorum to do that. So May 21st is going to present some staffing level challenges and mayoral absence challenge. So if there's an alternate date that you'd like to pick, we could do that. Or the other alternative is we could stick with the May 21st meeting date and Council President Striegel could run the meeting and a different staff person could take minutes. So it's just kind of an either or, what would you like to do?
What other meetings would have to be rescheduled?
The city's Personnel and Finance Committee meeting would be the other one that would, that normally meets on...
Board of Review also that's the five-minute meeting where we have the update on the full valley maintenance and then we adjourn to a later date. That meeting is somewhat flexible and has to be held within 30 days of the second Monday in May. So May 21st, May 28th, or the first week in June is okay for that brief Board of Review.
Are there any other meetings?
Do we have public safety that night too?
Yeah, we do.
Public safety would have to...
This is a problem, you know.
Well, I guess I have some concerns respectfully. Just having a new makeup of the city council and to not challenge, you know, open and transparent government, I think unless there's really serious reasons that we can't always hold the meetings when, when we typically hold them, I think we should, I think we should hold the meeting. I think that this council is very capable of making decisions regardless of whether the mayor is present or not. I certainly don't want to send the unintended message of, you know, the council isn't competent to have Maxine run the meeting or anything else. I just think it's, I think it's important that we are very consistent with all of our meeting times out of respect for the public and out of, you know, out of respect for other members on other committees. You know, I, I mean, I guess it's not a huge issue, but I just think unless we have, you know, extraordinary circumstances, especially for city council meetings, I think we don't know what unintended consequences happen if we move the meetings. I also don't want to send the message that this city council is going to regularly be just kind of moving meetings at will, even though I, I'm not saying that that's happened. I just, I just think we need to be as consistent as possible when we have, we have all these things.
This is the structure that we expect and here this, it would be, it would be the best policy to keep it going unless there's a truly unexpected consequence.
I don't remember in the past ever moving a meeting because of an absence.
There was, if I may...
Very often.
Last July, when I took over as interim clerk, I had a scheduled vacation. At that time Mayor Chesmer had, had pulled the council and authorized to move the meeting one week later. That was done at one time and I believe this may have been a few years prior, in August when Clerk Zastro was here, her and I were both at a conference and there was some fluctuate, fluctuating of dates there. It, it's not a common practice by any means, but it's, it's, it's optional, so.
Uncommon.
It usually happens once a year is, is how it, it kind of pans out.
We know that Deer Mudder is coming along and I, I trust that you aren't as avid Deer Mudder.
No, but in my defense, I will be at the International Municipal Clerks Conference in Atlantic City, New Jersey. As much as I love coming to meetings, I'm sad I won't be here. So I like to see it moved because I want to be here too, but.
I would agree with that. So I think we need to continue with a consistent process.
That really doesn't happen very often. I just want to know that.
In, in honor of David Anissa agreeing, we'll keep it on the 21st.
I mean, we could certainly vote on it. I mean, I'm not asking not to vote on it.
We'll keep it on in July.
Yeah, and to Clerk Ebert's commentary about the July meeting, often in July because if that first Tuesday falls very close within the Fourth of July, we only have one meeting in July, so sometimes we move that one around. A lot of staff vacations and Fourth of July events kind of make that. But other than that, it, it stays pretty much on a first and third Tuesday. So there will be somebody different sitting up there, just so you know, but we'll...
We're working out who. We're really short-staffed that day, so.
You'll see how talented, if I can talk and type at the same time. I probably can't.
See what we can do.
We'll see.
We'll record it. Somebody can review the minutes before they're signed off.
All the help we can get. All right, I'm hearing mayor, a general consensus of the council to stick with May 21st, which is the regularly scheduled meeting?
That's right. And all other meetings as scheduled. All right, move on to item C. I'm sorry, item B, Mayor Alderperson reports. I have a, just a, I suppose, three things. One, Jerry and Connie and I have begun talking about the 2014 budget a little bit. That's going to be a heck of a process for, for us this year. We're looking at, from new debt and everything that goes into increased utilities with new facilities and all that, we're looking at about $200,000 in additional dollars to be located from somewhere. That's a, that's a gap that we're going to have to work really hard to close and we'll begin to, as we start this process, we'll begin to try and seek input from, from just about everybody. So you'll see an announcement coming out for some listening sessions to hopefully get citizen input, department directors' input, employee input, you know, who better than the folks around the front line? And then of course ultimately we'll go through our familiar process where we'll come here and there'll be a budget presented, a slightly, one slight difference will be that the budget presented will be something that could be a finished product, but it will be accompanied by opportunities where we could cut. It will also be accompanied by opportunities to do more, which may or may not have dollars attached to them. So those will be decisions that will have to be made by the council, but we'll, we'll, I'll do my best, working with staff to present a very lean budget, but that maintains the high service levels that the citizens of Milton expect for their tax dollars. So that'll be in development as we speak. In City Hall, we're working on one of our, one of our, two kind of, you know, service goals, I guess. I call it citizen-focused. Some of the things that you'll already notice, that folks will already notice is when you call City Hall, now you get a voice. A person answers the phone, they help you get to the right department or they answer your question. It's, it's not something that is very common anymore, but it is something that I think that friendly voice, we're a hometown community. I think that that's something we're going to try and there'll be kinks along the way, but I'm confident that, that we can work through them. Along the same vein, we've, the website update has happened. That'll be rolling out here, the Milton-WI.gov. Meetings will be back on TV and online here soon. We're also working on a component of the website, just starting talking about today, where we will be able to, citizens will be able to see the progress of projects that we have here in the city or projects that affect the city. So just kind of what you were talking about, being responsive to the citizenry. Finally, one thing that came up is, is this idea of how we measure success. And we can measure success a lot of different ways and in the budget we'll get to talk about a lot of that. What do we count as a successful 2013? What does we, what do we count as a successful 2014 budget? And for me, at least, I won't be judging success by how many things we do, but more where are those things leading us to? Where do we want the city to be? What do we want it to look like in five, 10, 15 years? And is our 2014 budget or our actions in 2013 getting us there? And that's not saying that what we've done is bad or that there's anything wrong with a different approach. It's just saying that we can do better. There are some opportunities to look at things through a slightly different perspective and that's, that's my intent here and I know that those are concerns that the council will share as well. That's really all I have. Any Alderperson reports?
I've been trying for two years to get young people to come to a meeting and I think I finally hit upon one, a young girl would like, would like to come in to our council meeting and actually she'd like, she would like to get to know Connie because she's interested in being a treasurer someday. So I'm going to hook her up and introduce her with Connie and get, have an interview with Connie and open her personnel and finance where all the good things happen. And she wants to come to our rec committee meeting, so I hope that when she comes that you guys all welcome her, make her feel comfortable because she really wants to become involved. So it's been my goal since I got on council to get young people here and I'm hoping finally it will happen. I'm going to talk to her Friday about it, when she can come.
Thank you for all your recruitment effort.
So how does, you're having long-range planning goals reviewed and established fit into this?
I'm sorry?
We have had long-range planning meetings and established goals before. How does this fit into the scenario? Are we going to be reviewing those long-range plans?
I think we're constantly reviewing the plans that we have and the things that we do and the services we provide. We have a budget gap, I guess you'd call it, of about $200,000 staring us in the face in 2014 and not expected unless things are changed. To alleviate much the following year. So, yes.
I was just looking to see, you know, how they compare to what we've established as goals as, you know, from before.
We'll have those discussions.
No question about your budget. It used to be that we, back with the department heads for their first draft budget and were able to go along with them. Are you planning on going and...
Same process, same process we've done.
Doing that first and cutting out things that?
No. Well, I shouldn't say that. Jerry, I mean, you want to talk a little bit about what we talked about as the process from that perspective? That's kind of where Jerry comes in, dealing with department heads.
It seems like we get the budget here it is, either take it or leave it.
That's true. That is usually how it happens.
Yeah.
It's been a process.
You know.
I think.
It used to be. Sometimes the juicy parts get cut.
One of the things that I think is difficult is when we look at it just from the dollars perspective, when we say, oh, we need to, we need to cut $60,000, well, that's difficult to locate. If we look at it, though, from the other side, and we look at it from a service perspective, and we say, well, these are the services we want to provide, and I think that's what is useful about those meetings with the department heads, and that's, that process will remain intact. There will still be those presentations, and the council will have their opportunity.
And I can provide a historical perspective, as the process has worked since I've been administrator, is the mayor is responsible for putting together a budget, submitting it to the Personnel and Finance Committee, and then ultimately the entire city council. And so that position establishes some general parameters for me. Those parameters are established, I give those to the department directors. Two years ago, I believe, it was 5% across-the-board cuts, and we talked about that, and we had department heads come here in July of '11, when we held listening sessions, and they talked about what 5% cuts were going to mean in their service provision. You'll know where we're at every step of the way in the process. There won't be dramatic eliminations, dramatic service changes, or anything like that, done without, with all of your input. The piece for which we walk through a lot of what I would call the nitty-gritty of each of the department requests, the departments come with their, a series of requests. To me, I say, does it fall within the mayor's parameters of his or her respective budget that they seek in terms of what they have to or want to present publicly? And then, if it does, then that's what gets included and what gets presented to all of you in that first draft in October. I don't know, and I'll throw this out for a conversation, that if you want to be involved in every meeting with every department director and every, every step of that, of that process, because we evaluate a lot of different things, the majority of which you all see an end product in summary form from the departments when they present during budget workshops. These are the things that we talked about, these are the things that, where we ended up with, to stay within the parameters of that, of that requested budget. Because a $200,000 budget gap, if the mayor were to present in October, no changes and nothing, would reflect a double-digit tax increase. If you wanted it to be laid out like that, I mean, that's certainly your discretion, if you will, but I don't know politically for either you or the mayor that we want to, especially as we're trying to recruit hotels and businesses, to say, you know, mayor proposes 14% budget increase. I don't know that, this may be in need of a headline, that might be for Neil and James. I don't know that we want to do that. I would suggest you don't.
I think that's maybe what Alderperson Striegel was trying to point out, is maybe the council would like more involvement and not less. So no, we don't want that 14%, here you go, have fun, good luck getting re-elected.
Right, and that's what we try to avoid, and that's how I interpret the expectation of my position and how I understand the ordinance to read, is that the mayor submits that first budget, that say, this is, and to compare it to, you know, both, you know, state and national governments, that's how it works. The executive branch puts together a proposed budget to the legislative body, and then the legislative body either adds or subtracts things. And so that's, that's the process that we mirror, and I work within those parameters to get to that number of the proposed first executive budget, and then you folks get, of course, the final say.
I guess I would have trouble determining, at what point are you becoming micromanagers, and at what point do you just follow? If the goals are to do A, B, and C, and they follow within those parameters, but they meet the budget outline, then to me, they've created a budget that's appropriate for those goals, and that you would be micromanagers if you go through and go through every line item that they have within the budget. That's their job within.
And historically, that has been my philosophy, and we have five different, very, very qualified department managers and over 1,900 different accounts in the city's 141-page budget document. I will invite you to be in every single aspect of the development of that document that you want to be a part of, because that's important, that you understand it, that you know it, that you are comfortable with it, because you own it when you vote on it. And so whatever parts you want to be a part of, Connie and I will put together a process with the mayor, and we can show you everything that we get from the departments the minute we get it, but I just, I want to make sure that we have good role clarity in what your expectations of me are and what the mayor are regarding that, and so we have a good understanding of your involvement. I would anticipate a lot of listening sessions throughout the summer, because it's harder and harder to, to bridge that gap all the time. And we want to keep our service provision levels high, and we want to keep our taxes low, and we're going to need a lot of help in making those decisions to get there.
Good. Any other Alderperson reports?
I want to commend my Park and Recreation Committee because Milton was designated as a playful, I don't know.
That was awesome.
Playful City USA by Kaboom. We're one of four cities in the state, and there are not that many nationally, it makes us eligible for grants that we're hoping maybe we can use for Cross Ridge Park later on, but the improvements that the council has authorized us to make and what we have made, and the things that we have done in the last few years, I think has helped us with that designation, so I want to thank them, we've been a very proactive group.
I think we need to thank Inga too, and she knew all the work on it.
She's part of our committee.
Yeah, I know.
So, yeah, I want to make note to everybody on that committee who did all the stuff, and the council who had to authorize some of this.
Good. Staff report, city administrator.
Alderperson Verwin had touched on it, but for those that are not aware, we released shortly afternoon today, the city's official designation as a playful City USA by Kaboom makes us eligible for up to $20,000 in grants for creating recreational opportunities and playground equipment in our city's parks. A lot of thanks and a lot of credit goes out to Assistant Administrator Inga Jacobson for her work in that application. I know letters of support were also obtained by Inter Superintendent Roush, who talked about the policies, procedures, access, and agreements that we have for city parks, not only that are on city-owned property, but also on the school district properties. Another couple exciting events for the rest of the week are a National Bike to School Day tomorrow. We are in partnership with the School District of Milton, promoting not only health and wellness among our community's youth by encouraging a bike ride to school tomorrow. It's part of a national day that Milton has registered for that event with the State Department of Transportation, but also promoting ways to try to reduce the congestion in and around at our schools. When Milton was actually built, our community was much, much smaller, our enrollment in schools was much, much smaller. Anyone who drops off a child in and around our buildings at either east, west, or northside know that that can be a pretty substantially, you know, congested area with vehicles, so if we can promote more kids, especially now that we finally have nicer weather to ride their bicycles to school, and it certainly is a good thing from two components, promoting their health and wellness and physical activity, as well as promoting less vehicular traffic to reduce some of the congestions in and around our schools. This also does make us eligible when we do apply for safe routes to schools grants, that we're actively participating and promoting with regional partners to promote safe routes to schools. So hosting these events and registering in them nationally is a good thing for us in that endeavor. Last but not least, I ride my bike to work, so I would hope that people would join me in that cause tomorrow.
I will not be riding my bike, but I will gladly bring my helmet and shirt on.
It's a phenomenon in itself. Who is that weird guy with the suit that rides the bike? Kind of silly, but.
The backpack.
I hope people participate, and of course, Friday night is the Police Department's Annual Awards Recognition Banquet. I know many of you will be in attendance as we prepare to celebrate police work, we can recognize some of the good work of our police officers. I would hope that folks would attend at 7 o'clock at the Milton House.
Right, public works.
Just a lot of usual stuff, a lot of grass, and they're sweeping streets, did a lot of water services the last couple of weeks. Flower barrels are downtown now, so these hardly seem to play a part in this stuff. Dugouts are going to go in over at Lamar in the next couple of weeks. We will be out tomorrow handing out caught-wearing-helmet coupons or drinks, ice cream cone, that type of thing, to the kids that are wearing helmets, and we'll have quite a few officers out in the morning and the afternoon promoting safety and working with the crossing guards, trying to make sure nobody gets hit, or kids are driving unsafely on our sidewalks and bike lanes. And like Jerry said, we have the police banquet on Friday, and we have our squad cameras installed in our cars, but we're running into all sorts of technological issues with them. So we have about 196 video files in there right now, and we're in a little trouble getting them out of the computer or into them, so we can look at them. So Dad 911's working on it, and we're working on it. Our IT section, i.e. Ryan Justice, is working on it. Has been a huge challenge so far, and so that and we're up and working on a new system for documenting training and communicating in the department that's web-based, and that one is brand-new, and we're working out the kinks in that one, so it's been a lot of headaches recently with technological issues, but we'll get through it, it's always going to happen. And I think that's about it.
Library, over here from Joint Fire, city clerk.
Chief, you said adults also that are wearing their bike helmets could get certificates for ice cream cones?
I've never actually used one of those.
Well, Jerry wears his helmet too, so if I got to stand outside with my bike helmet and wave, we'll see if I can get an ice cream cone.
I am lighting with those kids, you might not be able to mistake me from the difference of a kid.
As far as my report, May is kind of an on-off busy month, getting ready for the alcohol and the operator licenses, so as they're coming in, I'm prepping their licenses and getting everything ready. So far, the turnout, the hand-in's been pretty good. They're not due till next Friday, so I figure I'll have a few come in next Friday about 3 o'clock. Going through our retention schedule, things that need to be kept for so many years, we have 10 years above that, so doing a little clean-out of our vault, a little bit every week, so if and when we're able to move to a new facility, it won't take us a week to move. That's it.
City treasurer.
We completed the audit last week, so the audit report will be issued. Next council session or next Personnel and Finance Committee meeting, I have started working on the budget for 2014, getting the templates all organized, and we're in the process of working with the utility billing clerk on the backflow and the cross-connection program, will be, as was approved tonight, purchasing additional software, which will be trained on, and then converting to get the database set up.
Good. Alderperson Striegel.
Okay, consideration of a motion to convene in the full session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Form 1, Form 8, deliberating or negotiating the purchases, purchasing of public property, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Reference industrial park land sale and potential sale of 340 East Madison Avenue, and Public Works Department and Police Department union contract negotiations, bearing G conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering orally or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Reference Animo case settlement.
Do you have a second? Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous decision of the council. Take five minutes.